Hello, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the January 26, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. We will now start with roll call. Evelyn, if you could please do roll call.
Bauer.
Here.
Marzo.
Here.
Fisher. Alonso.
Here.
Hooper.
Here.
Potter.
Here.
And we have one vacancy. Okay, great. Thank you very much, Evelyn. We will now move on to general public comment.
Listen, on Friday, January 22nd, we were planning another weekend of hard work to prepare for a high-stakes showdown that was scheduled for tonight, January 26th. The anticipated showdown was pitting the good guys and gals, that would be Petaluma's residents, constituents, taxpayers, and voters, against the bad guys and gals, the masters of bad faith and deception. That would be Complete Wireless, some entity masquerading as Verizon Wireless, and Negligent Larry, the owner of the Petaluma Creamery who's been illegally polluting Petaluma's air and water table for decades, despite many, many citations, threats, unpaid taxes, and penalties. Thankfully, the city of Petaluma finally sent Negligent Larry a letter with some teeth in it, forcing compliance or closure. Well, Verizon had no choice but to cancel their application and wait this one out. But rest assured, if the Petaluma Creamery gets back on its feet, Verizon will be coming right back in, filing a new application for the same spot, and we'll be facing the same problem unless we get smart right now and learn from what just happened. Who among the hired outsiders helped the most? Was it Telecom Law Firm, the firm with conflicts of interest a mile long, who've been fired by many cities, including a sister city of Malibu, California, this fall? Was it CTC Technology, a firm that charged $15,000 unless the professional equipment at home and used only Mickey Mouse $400 consumer-grade meters to write a vague report and answer no reasonable questions about how the methodology they filed to collect the signal strength data? And then they spun some questionable conclusions, very friendly to the wireless industry. No, the person that helped the most was Andrew Campanelli. That was the person identified by the residents, the nation's number-one telecom attorney, who's tried over 7,000 cases against the wireless industry across the US, and he wins over 80% of them. He's the top talent in the country, and he's willing to give Petaluma a wireless ordinance tune-up to close the gaping holes in the current Petaluma wireless ordinance, most of which still remain from the mid-1990s. This is what we should do. We should learn from the best. We should improve our ordinance and be prepared for the coming applications. If we do, we're gonna end up saving money, we're gonna generate revenue, we're gonna be in a good spot. Please, listen to your residents who are trying to help you the most. We're very, very happy. Verizon took a pause. We're very happy the letter was written, but we need to take the next steps to prepare. Thank you for my time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we can now move on to old business, which is the Verizon application, which has been withdrawn. So we will not be hearing about the merits of the project, but we will just be hearing about the withdrawal of the application. And if we have any questions regarding the withdrawal, we can ask staff. This just happened a few days ago, so things have moved pretty fast here. But I'm gonna go ahead and pass this on to our staff, Ms. Bendix, to explain the withdrawal and the pieces of the project for us. Thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners and Councilmember Fisher, Brittany Bendix, Deputy Planning Manager. Chair Bauer is correct. The application for the Verizon telecommunications facility at the Creamery has been withdrawn. We received a letter from Verizon's council on Friday, and we're able to disseminate that out to decision-makers, the HCPC, the Planning Commission, as well as City Council, and then also the neighbors that we've heard routinely, general public comment meetings, as well as by email. And then we've posted that information on the website. And what the letter says is that at this time, based on the issues and the compliance issues at the Creamery, Verizon's chosen not to move forward and therefore has withdrawn their application. So we're here tonight to answer any questions that the public or commissioners may have regarding that application.
And can I just add on to that, just for clarity's sake? This is not a postponement of the Verizon hearing. It is a withdrawal of the application. So the shot clock stops, the application is no longer active. There will not be a, you know, I think we saw something in communication in the community that the hearing had been postponed, and I really just want to emphasize that this is not a postponement. This is a withdrawal of the application, and there will not be another hearing on this application.
Thank you, Ms. Bendix and Ms. Hines. That was really good. I think before we go to any commissioner comments or questions, we'll open it up to public comment. This public comment is on the withdrawal of the Verizon application.
My name is Scott Springhorn. We, the citizens, are extremely grateful to the city staff and their work and their recommendation to deny the Verizon Creamery WTF application, leading to Verizon's withdrawal. Thank you for all of your hard work. I also want to say thank you to the Planning Commission, and especially those commissioners who we got to meet with to discuss this project, as well as listening to all of our comments each meeting over the last six to seven months. We would like to pivot on the success to now work to strengthen Petaluma's wireless ordinances in order to secure maximum public safety, reduce legal risk, and maximize cost efficiency for our city moving forward. We are requesting that the city immediately act to hire Andrew Campanelli to strengthen Petaluma's wireless ordinance per evolving technology. By ordering this review and having strong and legal ordinances added to our current city code, it will do the following. It will give the city the maximum power in our codes to decide where these facilities go that is best for the city. Two, it will teach and educate city staff on how to exercise these codes to correctly protect the city. In addition, this will save the city money and also have the opportunity to add revenue streams to the city. The city can make it so that they have all the correct codes and ordinances in place so that there is no need to have long, drawn-out application periods, no room for wireless companies to act in bad faith, and the city has the power to do what is best for the city and its general plan. Verizon has withdrawn their application for the proposed project on the Creamery for now. They have even stated that they are looking to come back when the Creamery is in compliance. Let's keep the momentum moving forward on this issue and strengthen our ordinances now. Last night in the City Council meeting, City Attorney Danley made a comment that the city staff was going to recommend an update on these ordinances, another great step for the city to take. With this step, we ask that you hire Andrew Campanelli to do this work. We want to be very clear that not hiring Mr. Campanelli and hiring another firm, like Telecom Long Firm, or a person who works with the wireless companies, would do even more harm to do with all of our current ordinances. This could even undo a lot of the already strong and useful ordinances that we currently have. Let's do the right thing and choose the best person for the job, which is Mr. Campanelli. This ordinance review is right in line with our general plan and the Climate Action Committee. Back in 2018, the city did a fantastic job of writing strong ordinances to prevent small cell towers to be in residential areas. And now it's time to do the same thing for minor and major towers. This work would be exactly what the city needs to stay on track with its promise, to do what is best for the city and its citizens. And this is something that would benefit all Petalumans and its residents. Thank you for your time.
This is Beverly Ewing. Good evening, Commissioners and staff. Verizon's plans to build a wireless facility have been withdrawn. When the Creamery's problems are fixed, Verizon finds another site, there's no doubt we will right back here. Those of us who have been most active fighting this would be very happy if Verizon gave up on this location. But we don't want to simply kick the problem down the road to another neighborhood. Verizon claims it has a significant gap in coverage. This is interesting because last week I had a conversation in the Verizon store. I gave the employee my address, which is in the supposed gap area, and told him I was very concerned not to get dropped calls. This is what I was told. Quote, "Petaluma firefighters and paramedics use Verizon because it is so reliable. You will have amazing, amazing coverage where you live." He went on to respond to my question about streaming data with wireless internet. I was told, "You can stream movies right now with Verizon." To confirm this, together we looked at the coverage map, which Verizon makes available on their website. So Verizon's own data shows there's not a coverage gap in service in the area around the Creamery. What's more, the independent consultant hired by the city to look at Verizon's coverage stated that their drive test shows that the, quote, "current Verizon network provides reliable in-vehicle coverage for transitional voice, text messaging, and email services throughout the entire area of the testing conducted." Wireless data transmission uses five times the energy as wired service does. Why do we need these massive antennas at all? Is this so we can video conference on our phones as we walk around town? Because once you're in your home, your phone switches over to your wired service for data downloads. If you do live in those rare places that have high-speed 5G right now, you have those speeds and wireless speeds are required, since millimeter waves don't transmit well through walls or even glass. The fact is, there are very few businesses, let alone residences, that actually need 5G speeds despite what the telecom industry is trying to tell us all. Our city code calls for providing, quote, "a public forum to ensure a balance between public concerns and private interests in establishing telecommunication and related facilities." I haven't talked to anyone in Petaluma who uses the internet for work entertainment who can't get the data transmission speeds they need or desire through our wired service providers. If you look through the many public comments regarding this issue, it's very hard to find anyone who supports this project, especially if you look at responses from people who actually live in the neighborhood. When you, as commissioners, soon look at the next Verizon proposal, I hope you will consider every legal option to deny something that you do not need or want. Use our existing regulations, or better yet, strengthen them. Let's do everything we can as a town to get the technology that serves our needs and that doesn't undermine our health, climate, and environment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. My name's Lydia Schindler. Planning Commissioners, thank you for your attention. As you were just informed, late last week Verizon decided to withdraw their application to plant a macro cell tower on the Petaluma Creamery. And through the work of the city, and thank you very much, and community, we produced enough evidence that, for now, impressed on Verizon to withdraw. The compilation of evidence was at a huge cost of time and dollars for the city. Telecom corporations will continue to vie for adding cell towers to our town. We need to be capable of deciding what, when, and where it's appropriate to place cell towers. And we shouldn't have to pay for obtaining evidence. Research is down the pipe for clean-air communications. And truthfully, the underlying desire for most of us is to tool up to obtain evidence of need, protecting health and safety as inevitable increases of microwave radiation permeates our community and the environment around us. We need to update and revise our telecommunications municipal code as soon as possible. I belong to a citizens group, a couple that have just spoken, that has had the opportunity to work with Andrew Campanelli, whose expertise in telecommunications municipal codes is extremely impressive. He's worked for years with cities in California and throughout the country. He is not associated with a telecom law firm that can potentially be aligned with telecom giants. Thus, he can help create a municipal code that gives our city more power to decide what is best. This should include the city's adoption of the requirement to oversee scheduled testing of radiation emitted from the various cell towers throughout our city. It's time for us not to rely on information these companies give us, which does not seem to occur anyway, but for us to monitor and document how much radiation is being emitted from each cell tower in our community. I hope you support us in our request for the city of Petaluma to use the expertise of Andrew Campanelli. Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Wendy Denny. Many Petaluma citizens are thankful for the withdrawal of Verizon's cell tower application at the Creamery, and we commend the city for its actions opposing it. Thank you very much. Verizon and other telecom companies will continue to come into our town and attempt to place cell towers essentially wherever they please. We need to ensure that we won't repeat the past seven months of confusing and exhausting interactions between city, citizens, and Verizon Telecom. Now it's most important, now it's most essential for the city to pivot and focus on the solution. It's time for our city to establish a firm footing in smart city planning by hiring the leading expert in telecom law and realize it's the city's choice and not the telecom companies to decide where these towers should go. Andrew Campanelli is the national expert and leading litigator for telecom law, and the city of Petaluma should hire him to create and draft strong wireless ordinances, educate the staff on the 1996 TCA law, teach the city how to implement the wireless ordinances to ensure that cell service is provided where needed and towers are placed in least intrusive sites. We cannot rely on the information from Verizon to be accurate or true. For example, in the application withdrawal letter from Verizon, it states, quote, "Verizon Wireless submitted evidence confirming a significant gap in service in the South Petaluma area," end quote, followed by, quote, "CTC confirmed that there is inadequate network capacity," end quote. Verizon did not prove there was a gap in coverage. They only used the word "service." The 1996 TCA law defines that the city's requirement is to provide coverage. And currently, our town is saturated with Verizon cellphone coverage. Verizon is attempting to obscure their findings. They are being vague and not defining the terms "service" and "capacity." They are implying that the city is legally obligated to provide capacity, which is not true. It's obvious Verizon is not transparent about their definitions. Once Petaluma has strong wireless ordinances added to the city code, then our city will have maximum power to decide the proper location for cell towers and have the competency to protect our neighborhoods from outside dishonest influence. Over the past seven months, both the city and citizens have expended a tremendous amount of energy and time on the Creamery application. Now it's time to hire Andrew Campanelli and develop a solid legal foundation to control cell tower placements in our community, to protect our neighborhoods, and to avoid repeating the exhausting exercise we just went through. We are asking for the city to immediately hire Campanelli. Thank you very much for your time.
Good evening. This is Heather Muir. As a resident in the neighborhood of the Petaluma Creamery, I am grateful for the city staff for their work behind the recommendation to deny the application for the proposed Verizon cell tower project, which led to Verizon's withdrawal of their application. Thanks so very much. While encouraged by Verizon's decision to walk away at this time, it's clear that Verizon will be back quickly with an application for another site in Petaluma, or even this same site, as their attorney letter to the city states. I'm asking the city to take this window of time to strengthen Petaluma's wireless ordinance as soon as possible. Along with other members of the community, I'm recommending that the city hire Andrew Campanelli, given his unique expertise, to help strengthen Petaluma's wireless ordinance. After what the city and the citizens have been through with the recent application with Verizon over the last seven months, it sure would be a relief to strengthen the wireless ordinance to avoid future grief. On a related topic, in reading the letter from Verizon's attorney, there are at least two misrepresentations which seem important for the city to refute. First, in the letter from Verizon's attorney, it states that the drive test by CTC that the city funded verified the gap in building coverage. It seems important to refute this in writing, as Verizon is erroneous in their interpretation of the CTC report, and for the city to clarify that it has not validated or confirmed a gap in in-building coverage. Secondly, in the letter from the Verizon attorney, it references a recent fire that affected an adjacent structure. To clarify, the cell tower facility was proposed for the top of the very building where the recent fires occurred, not in the adjacent structure. It seems important for the city to address this error. Lastly, as to the Creamery operations itself, regretfully, the health, fire, and noise issues continue. Just last week, the operations were cited with a new noise violation for being over allowable decibels, both in daytime and nighttime. Thank you for your continued attention to the health, safety, and well-being of the residences in our community.
Thank you. My name is Samantha Buller. In the letter that Verizon sent to the city withdrawing their application for the wireless facility on top of the Creamery, it had multiple false or misleading statements, and it made a remark about them coming back when the Creamery comes into compliance. Now is the time to take this success and continue down this track of doing what is best for Petaluma and its citizens. While we have this momentum, we ask the council and city staff to please hire Andrew Campanelli now to do a review of our current ordinances and help to strengthen them even further to secure maximum public safety, reduce legal risk, and maximize cost efficiency for our city moving forward. The city already has good ordinances it can stand by, but having Campanelli come in, do a review, and strengthen them will allow the city to have maximum power so the best decisions can be made for the city and its citizens. This review would also ensure that the city's staff would be educated on how to correctly use these codes and ordinances to do what is best for the city. This review and strengthening of codes and ordinances will be good for all Petalumans in every neighborhood. This would also allow the city to save money as well as open new streams of revenue. This is right on path with the new general plan and the Climate Action Committee. We ask that you hire Andrew Campanelli, as he has a proven track record with helping and protecting cities. Hiring any other consultant, especially ones that work with telecom companies, is the exact opposite of what needs to happen, and that is why Andrew is the best. Let's keep this great momentum moving forward, and all work together to get this done for our city and its current and future citizens. Thank you.
Listen, I have faced Telecom Law Firm, oh, probably 20 times now in all of my work that I've done over the last three years. In fact, they fraudently stole my testimony time when we were trying to fight SB 649. This firm has conflicts of interest. Both Jonathan Kramer and Robert Tripp-May are managing directors of two companies. One is one that processes applications for cities. They earn money for every time they process a small cell application. That's why they're big in trying to get you to go that way. They also have a separate company that's allegedly giving you objective advice. But wait a minute, their advice pretty much is gonna say, "Take it all on," because then they earn money by processing applications. Come on now, folks. It's not hard to see this, and a lot of people who do say goodbye Telecom Law Firm. What you want to do is talk to the guy who's been doing it for 27 years. He's the best guy I work with. I also work with a guy who argued with the DC Circuit Court of Appeals, W. Scott McCullough. He argued that yesterday, and this was the big case against the FCC trying to never change their RF guideline. Looks like the FCC is gonna lose that one. We had a big, big performance yesterday. So what do you need to know about this? It's all about dBm, decibel-miliwatt. And you hired a firm to try to give you good information, but what they reported to you was a little fuzzy. They only told you it was LTE in that data. What you have to look at are the tables I've already printed and put in the public record, and that are the licenses already owned by Verizon for each of these frequencies. And so what do we have? 12 separate channels from 700 megahertz through 2180. That's about 100 megahertz of bandwidth, but that's not all they're gonna do, because they just went ahead and bought more. There's about another 500 megahertz of bandwidth at 3550 to 3650. There's five separate channels there. They're gonna put that on there too, but that wasn't on the application, you see. This is a bait and switch. They give you one application, and then they come back and jack it all up. There's ways around this. You actually sit down and put a nice ordinance in place that looks at managing three key variables for every wireless telecommunications facility. Vertical, how many feet off the street. Horizontal, how many feet away from residences. And finally, maximum power output. You only need enough power for making outdoor phone calls. That's minus 85 dBm on the high end, minus 125 dBm on the low end. All of that can make phone calls. Therefore, you can be confident that you only place towers where it's needed, where there's a gap in coverage. Easy to do, at no cost to the city. Andrew can show you how. I think that's your best move. Thank you very much.
Hi, Eric. My husband's here, and he wants to cede his time to me.
Okay.
Okay, do you need him to tell me, to prove he's here?
Hi, Taryn. Yes, can he just indicate his name for the record and that he's ceding time to you?
Okay. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ahmed Obaid, and I'd like to please cede three minutes to Taryn Obaid. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, you have six minutes. Starting you on the clock.
Thank you very much. Citizens are immensely appreciative that city staff recommended denial of the Verizon Creamery wireless facility application that resulted in Verizon withdrawing. We thank you so much for that. And we'd like to thank very much the Planning Commissioners, who, leading up to what would have been the hearing tonight, took time out to meet with us neighbors and listen to the many problems that this project has for the families, businesses in the area, as well as property values in the immediate area, as well as actually the negative impacts that would have implications for other neighborhoods throughout Petaluma and the future of all Petalumans. Thank you, Commissioners, for your demonstrated care for and dedication to Petalumans. We are grateful, and we want to help. We want to help the city leverage the success. We want to continue to help and help take the final crucial step of strengthening Petaluma's wireless ordinance to protect public safety, reduce legal risk, maximize cost efficiency for our city on every wireless facility application moving forward. The city indicated last night at the City Council meeting that they are willing to rewrite our Petaluma's wireless ordinance, which is terrific news. Thank you for that. Citizens respectfully request the city hire the people's attorney, Andrew Campanelli, who charges less than $10,000 for a comprehensive review of all of our city ordinances in order to write the best, legally strongest wireless ordinance based on the over 1,000 court cases he has litigated. Andrew Campanelli is the number-one U.S. litigation attorney for wireless telecom with a track record of defending municipalities and citizens' rights. Given that the city just spent $15,000 of taxpayer money on the drive test, which we are very appreciative for, neighbors think that spending less than $10,000 on Campanelli would be smart, because it would save us from ever having to spend $15,000 per application that is submitted in the future. So we would be ahead by at least $5,000 with the very next application submitted. That's fiscally smart. It is important to get the right person to do the job right. What I mean by this is through the many months and thousands of hours that I and multiple other neighbors have spent studying this wireless issue, we've learned that the truth is that telecom carriers and their attorneys and their aligned consultants, such as Telecom Law Firm, they routinely use the complexity of the technology and the law to misguide cities. They obfuscate facts. They promote confusion by mixing up the FCC-relevant issue of call coverage with the FCC-irrelevant issue of broadband, excuse me, broadband capacity. This effort to misinform is tenacious, and we saw it. We saw it yet again with Verizon's withdrawal letter, where they blurred the line between coverage and capacity. And we even saw it in the drive test. In the analysis, the report, that consultant, who is aligned with telecom carriers, he also blurred the line between what was relevant and what was irrelevant per FCC and the Telecommunications Act. We need someone we can trust. Andrew Campanelli, he's a stark contrast to those types of firms that are known for misguiding cities. Like Telecom Law Firm, it's all over Google. You can find what they did in Malibu, how they got their contract canceled, how Monterey overturned the staff report and their recommended resolution because Telecom Law Firm misguided them. And the city of Coronado, where they have antenna on every utility pole. You can pull up images on Google. It is not a pretty sight, and we don't want that for Petaluma. He talked them out of their wireless ordinance. Telecom Law Firm did. Taxpayers want our money spent on the right person to do the Taxpayers want our money spent on the right person to do the right job, to provide Petaluma with an ordinance that is lawsuit-strong, that is money-saving, and that generates revenue by bringing in lease revenue for the city. Thank you again for listening to us staff and Planning Commissioners. We thank you very much for protecting us. We will continue to follow up with the city to see how we can help to facilitate, facilitate taking the next crucial step, and, which is very important to our Petaluma's future and for all of our safety. Thank you again very much, and have a good night.